We're gonna call the meeting to order at 7:02. Welcome, everyone, to our May 23rd School Committee meeting. My name is Susan Prewindowski and after our elections, we reorganized our school committee and this year I will be the chair. I'd like to congratulate Rachel King for newly elected to the school committee and also to congratulate Mr. Hammond, Mr. Dolan, and Mr. Gelfey, who should be here shortly, for being reelected to the school committee. And let's just introduce our school committee members. We have Julius Cop Harris on the end with Mrs. Holbrook, Mr. Dolan, Mr. Swenson, our superintendent, Mr. Hammond, school committee, and Rachel King. And with that, we'll start with our Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge, my conditions, to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And I'd like to start with our approval of minutes. And first up will be the April 24th, 2018 minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes? Motion by Mr. Hammond, second by Mr. Dolan. Any discussion? Motion to approve the minutes. Oh, so moved. Did I?
You did that. Now you need to just ask for the vote.
For the vote. Vote to approve the minutes.
All those in favor?
All those in favor. Any opposed? All right. Let's see if we can get the May 1st meeting. Motion to approve the May 1st meeting minutes. Motion by Mr. Hammond, second by Mrs. Holbrook. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So voted. Thank you very much. Moving on to correspondence and recognition. Mr. Swenson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This evening, I would like to invite Mr. Paul Jovalos, who's a special ed administrator, to come up to talk about our Therapeutic Day Program and a wonderful initiative that they took on this past month in regards to a stuffed animal project with him. There he goes. Very cool. And is the teacher from our Therapeutic Day Program. This is Liz Albon and our school adjustment counselor, this is Jen Holton. So, welcome.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the school committee, Superintendent Swenson. Congratulations, Madam Chair, and Ms. King, our new member. Very excited tonight to be here with Liz and Jen, names that you've probably heard several times and heard praise of as the high school team for our Therapeutic Day Program. I'm here tonight to tell you about a project that we took on. We brought a prop for you to foresee and interact with as we do our presentation as well. The students in the high school classroom were brought the idea by Kate Dyer, the president of our Special Education Parents Advisory Council, to create these weighted stuffed animals, which is actually a sensory tool for students and calming and soothing strategy used by students, comparable to a weighted blanket or something like that, but a little bit more fun and interactive. So, Ms. Dyer came to us with this service project idea. She used CPAC funds to purchase poly pellets and then we had donations made of several stuffed animals, ten large size, four pounders, and fourteen small size, two to three pound stuffed animals, which many of our students donated as well. And then did the project of making a small incision and inserting the poly pellets and sewing them back up to eventually have them go to many classrooms across our district. Teachers at the Mitchell Elementary School, Liberty Elementary School, Williams Intermediate School, and the district preschool all received some of these weighted stuffed animals that the students have enjoyed and, as Ms. Maloney at the Mitchell School put it, have been loved hard since they were received. But we're really proud of the students and actually at the Mitchell School, the students got to deliver the weighted stuffed animals to the three classrooms at the Mitchell School themselves and see how excited the students were to receive them. So it was just a great, well-rounded activity and part of a lot of the service learning and community learning that students do at the Therapeutic Day Program. The students in our middle school classroom also have a hydroponic tower, which was generously donated by Ms. Thomas, our Director of Student Services, and they harvest from the hydroponic tower and sell those fruits and vegetables in our break room, our admin office. They do bake sales frequently to benefit local animal shelters. So, really try to instill a feeling of pride in our students for some of the work that they do at the Therapeutic Day Program. It's just one small part of what we do and are very, very proud of. We have a wonderful team in addition to Liz and Jen. Peter Pina, our paraprofessional for the program, is here as well. We were hoping to have a couple of students here this evening. One had a baseball game, so it looks like they might be running a little bit late, but they were all very proud nonetheless to be recognized by the school committee when we shared this with them.
Well, thank you. I just want to say, and I say it every year when we bring folks up from the Therapeutic Day Program, that program that was started has saved so many lives of our kids and impacted so many futures of our kids and that's a testament to what Ms. Albon does every day and what Mr. Holton does, Mr. Pina, and everyone involved with that program and the middle school program. And I love the fact that these students, who sometimes have dealt with some adversity in their lives and end up in that therapeutic program to get that therapeutic support, actually took on a project that will help other students with similar situations. So I think that sense of giving back and paying it forward is outstanding. So thank you for everything you do and thank the kids. They're wonderful kids. We see them each and every day and I like the fact that we were over at the high school this morning and saw a couple of them actually coming in to the building who have transitioned back to the general program, even if it's just for a partial day initially, but that's always the goal and you guys did such a wonderful job with that. So thank you.
Thank you for the recognition as well.
Thank you.
Yes, Madam Chair. The second, under correspondence and recognition, tonight we were trying to get our Rainwater Players here, but it's a very busy time of the year, as everybody knows, with senior events and end-of-year events. But I just want to let you know that I went and I know members of the committee went as well a few weeks back and it was outstanding, the Rainwater production of Footloose. As a kid of the eighties, it brought me back. So, I didn't realize how many songs I actually knew that actually came through. So, and they were outstanding and I say it every year, you go to these productions and you see the sets, you see the costumes, but then you see the talent that our kids have and you forget for a minute that you're actually at a high school play. They do such an outstanding job. And the crew that moves the set and those types of things and the situation where we have members of our musical, and I believe Ryan was actually in a cap. Would you like to hum a few bars for us of Footloose solo? But it was outstanding and I can't say enough about what Mrs. White and all of the folks do at the high school for Rainwater. So, and I know some other folks went to the play as well.
It was wonderful.
It was wonderful, as always. So, thank you, Ryan, and everyone involved. Thank you, sir. All right. And lastly, we have some correspondence from Mrs. Griffin, who is the music teacher at the high school. And this is about the Music in the Parks Festival and on the Bridgewater Rainham Regional High School Music Department had a very successful experience on the weekend of May 12th and 13th at the Music in the Park Festival. The Bridgewater Rainham Regional High School won five trophies. First concert choir came in first place. Mix Choir won with an excellent rating. Our chamber singers came in first place. Mix Chorus II with an excellent rating. Chorus band finished in second place with a superior rating, but only finished three-quarters of a point behind the first place. Our chamber singers got best overall choir and the women's choir had an excellent rating. So a very successful day for our band and music program at the high school. And just a side note, Mrs. Griffin wanted us to know that more importantly, our kiddos were amazing ambassadors for the Bridgewater Rainham Regional High School Music Program. All of the student musicians arrived on time and interacted respectfully with chaperones and their peers. They cheered each other on and were upbeat, enthusiastic despite some inclement weather. These student musicians, once again, brought great pride and honor to our district. Great job, kiddos. And she just wanted to thank you for all that. And I did want to thank all of the wonderful music educators that we have throughout the district who are in attendance and also all of the incredible parent guardian volunteers who chaperoned the event as well. So thank you to all of you folks as well.
Thank you, Mr. Swenson. Is there anyone here from the?
Band?
Band, of course.
Ryan, again. So, Ryan, would you like to sing something from the Chamber Singers?
I'm gonna have to pass.
All right. That's all we have, Madam Chair.
And I do have one piece of correspondence from Mr. Marrera, who could not be with us tonight. He's doing military exercises and he had written an email to Senator Pacheco, "As the new school committee legislative liaison for the Bridgewater Rainham School, I would like to ask for your support in Senate Budget Amendments Number 242 and 161, which will increase funding for regional school transportation, money that Massachusetts promised to regional school districts since Massachusetts began regionalizing. This account is short-funded by millions of dollars every single year, putting the burden on our schools and local taxpayers. Your assistance would be greatly appreciated. Thank you." And he emailed that on Tuesday, May 22nd and he received a reply. Kevin, please be advised that Senator Pacheco is a cosponsor of Amendment 242. He has always supported the maximum possible funding for regional school transportation and will continue to do so. And that was signed by Mary Wazlick, the Chief of Staff of the Office of Senate, President pro temp for Mark Pacheco. So that would be another correspondence.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll move on to educational reports and I believe Mrs. Holbrook is going to do the student council report.
I am. Thank you, Madam Chair. This evening will be the final Student Advisory Council report for the 2017-2018 school year. Thank you once again to the Student Advisory Council members, Sam, Jake, Katie, Emma, Ryan, and Rachel. Your work to prepare and present monthly updates has been an invaluable opportunity for all of us to gain insight into the high school activities from a student's perspective. The strong sense of pride that you have in your school is admirable. To our three seniors, Katie, Jake, and Sam, have a safe and happy summer. We wish you well next year as you begin your next chapter. To Emma, Ryan, and Rachel, we hope you have a wonderful summer as well and be safe and hope to see you back next year. I would also like to thank Ms. Kristin McCord, who without her guidance and support, none of this would be possible. Ms. McCord would now like to say a few words about our departing seniors.
Good evening. My name is Kristin McCord. I'm a history teacher at the high school, for those of you that don't know me. I just wanted to thank all of you on behalf of the board for allowing us to come up here every month and for them to tell you all the great things that are going on at the high school and just to thank these kids who come to the meetings every week and help put the reports together. As you probably know, most of them are involved in clubs or sports or activities and they're still very committed to it and they do a really great job. Some of them are new to the board this year, Ryan and Emma and Jake, and some of them are returning, Katie and Rachel, it's both their second year. And this is my third year doing it. It's also Sam's third year doing it, so we kind of came into this together here. So, I'm very sad to see our seniors go. Katie and Jake couldn't be here tonight. Katie's on the lacrosse team and Jake is on the baseball team and they both had games tonight, but they wanted us to also thank you all on their behalf. We wanted to wish our seniors the best of luck in the future too. Sam's gonna be going to Bryant University, where he's gonna be studying finance. Katie's gonna be going to Keene State, where she is going to be studying elementary education. And Jake is going to be going to UMass Amherst, where he's gonna be studying history and political science and ultimately, he hopes to also join the Marine Corps. So, I just wanted to thank them and thank you guys for another great school year. So, thank you.
So, before we begin, we'd also just like to thank Ms. McCord. Without her, this would not be possible. She helps us so much in the mornings with our meetings, putting together the presentations and these meetings, of course. So, as a little appreciation, we got you a little gift.
Thank you.
So, as you guys heard, tomorrow's the last full day for seniors. And at the end of the day tomorrow, our first exam will be held last period and we have a lot of fun upcoming events for our class, which we are all excited about. First, the senior prom will take place this Friday, May 25th, at Lake Pearl and Rhythm. And then on Tuesday, we will be doing our senior walk at the elementary schools, where we dress in our caps and gowns and walk through the elementary schools to say hi to all of the younger students of the Bridgewater Rainham School District. On Thursday, May 31st, BR seniors will have their annual senior banquet at the Holiday Inn. On this night, students and teachers celebrate the end of the seniors' academic careers with music, food, and yearbook signings. After the banquet, students have their annual senior lock-in, one of the most anticipated and fun nights of the year, right at the high school, where games, shows, and raffles are conducted throughout the night. On June 4th, the BR Sports Awards will be held in order to recognize the achievements of BR student athletes. And finally, the BR senior class will graduate on Sunday, June 3rd, and we want to wish all the members of the class of 2018 the best of luck in their future endeavors. And as you guys know, this is my last meeting. It's been three years and I'd just like to say thank you to all of you. It's been really fun and definitely a new experience, so thank you.
Thank you, Sam.
Good evening, school committee. My name is Ryan LaCivida and today I will be giving updates on the Great East Festival, our teacher appreciation project, and the speech and theater play that is going on. So, the music department attended the Great East Festival on Saturday, May 12th. They competed with bands and chorus groups from around the state and did well in their different competitions. The chorus got an excellent rating. The chambers also got an excellent rating and a first overall in their division. And the band got second place in a superior rating, which was their first superior rating at all in general. And we did have fun, even though it was very rainy at Six Flags and it was a great experience. And at the beginning of May, we completed the Student Advisory Board's Spring Project for Teacher Appreciation. We asked each senior to fill out an appreciation letter form for one teacher who really impacted them during their time in high school and we passed out these Teacher Appreciation Day forms on May 8th. Many teachers told us how appreciative they were of this and we were excited to help make their day that much more special. We hope to continue doing this in the years to come. And the speech and theater class will be putting on their year-end performance on May 29th at 3:00 PM at the high school. This year, they are performing a murder mystery entitled "Who Done It?", which was written by BR students. If you have a free afternoon, come check out all their hard work. And I want to say thank you as a first-year sophomore. This was really fun to do. I really liked presenting and telling everybody about all of the activities and I really do hope I can come back next year for more, so thank you.
Thanks, Ryan.
My name is Emma Snellgrove and today I will be reporting on Student Government Day and Special Advisory. Next Thursday, May 31st, we will be Bridgewater Rainham Student Government Day. This tradition is celebrated each year to allow students in the district to get to know the function of their town governments and school systems. Fifty junior students are signed up, including myself, who will be the town clerk for the day. One group will spend the day at the central office with members of the school committee and administration. Another group will go to the Bridgewater Town Hall with Ms. McCord. And a third group will go to the Rainham Town Hall with Mrs. Murdock. These students will listen to speakers and shadow town officials for the morning before heading back to BR for student lunch. On Wednesday, May 16th, BR held a special hour-and-a-half-long advisory block for all the students at the high school. During this time, juniors and seniors were giving a presentation on prom safety, which included a discussion and a Q&amp;A with a panel of distinguished law enforcement guests, as well as a video and a live reenactment of the aftermath of a driving accident of someone who was under the influence. While this was occurring, the freshmen and sophomores were attending a research fair in the gymnasium. Students were given a scavenger hunt map and asked to visit the booths on all different topics surrounding mental and physical well-being, as well as drug and alcohol addiction. Both of these events were great learning experiences for BR students. I just want to say also to say thank you for my first year. It was really good to be a part of this and I hope to be back next year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, school committee. My name is Rachel Mesefield and tonight I'll be talking to you about the AP Art Sendoff, Academic Awards Night, and the Rainwater Players. On Tuesday, May 8th, the AP Art students held a send-off ceremony during the long block Period III at the high school. Teachers were invited to sign up and bring their classes down to the art room. Ms. McCord brought our history class down and we were all so impressed with the amount of talent and dedication we saw in the students' work. Their work showed their incredible talent and I am excited to have the opportunity to take AP Art next school year. Last night, BR held its annual Academic Awards Night. On this night, the junior members of the National Honor Society are inducted and students receive varying awards, including departmental awards, the principal's club superintendent's award, and the John Riley Outstanding Achievement Award. This year, the superintendent's award was awarded to Senior Ryan Smith, who currently holds the highest grade point average for the senior class and will be class valedictorian at graduation. The John Riley Outstanding Achievement Award was given to Senior James Scow. We want to congratulate all those inducted in NHS and those who received an award last night. Finally, the Rainwater Players wanted to thank anyone who came to their successful performances of Footloose this year. This marks the end of our May presentation. We appreciate the opportunity you have given us each month to come and discuss all the great things going on at our school. We hope you all have a great summer. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, thank you very much. We look forward to those reports every month. There's so many things going on at the high school and it's wonderful that you come to share them with us. Did you want to come up and shake our hand? This is the last. Next, we have our summer reading and math packets and that will be with Mr. Powers. Large print version for the committee.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the school committee, Superintendent Swenson. Thank you for allowing me to come to the podium tonight. As you know, in your packets and before you, you have the proposed summer reading and math packets for our students entering fifth grade all the way up through high school. And really, the way it's broken down, and I'll just kind of give you a quick overview, is obviously we have English Language Arts packets as well as math packets. The math packets, for the most part, you know, very, very minor changes, really no major content changes to those packets, so they really, you know, remain kind of in place from years prior. In terms of the ELA packets themselves, the only thing that really has changed, again, not necessarily the requirements and the type of work that the students have had to complete over the summer, but really the titles themselves. And I can just kind of give you a quick overview of those titles. For our students, current grade four, entering fifth grade students, the teachers are asking them to read at least one book over the summer and they are giving them some suggestions. One is a whole new ballgame, "The One and Only Ivan and I Survived the American Revolution." Certainly, we would love our students to read more than one book, but we're asking at a very minimum that they read one and at least pick one of those from the list. So that's grade four going into grade five. For our grade five going into grade six students, they're being asked to read again at least one fiction book this summer and the chosen fiction book for the students is "Where the Red Fern Grows" by Wilson Rawls. And being a former sixth-grade teacher, I was so pleased to see this. It's certainly one of the great classics out there. If you haven't read it, I would highly encourage you to read it, especially if you're a pet owner. But, so that'll be for our sixth-grade students. Our seventh and eighth-grade students are actually going to read the same book. And as you remember, a couple of years ago, we did one book, one school, for our middle school students on either side of the district. And obviously, you know, not every student can read the same book over and over again because it'll certainly repeat, but what they're really trying to do is group as much as possible the same book. So our grade seven and eight students will read the book "Eleven" by Tom Rogers. And this is a story about a boy who turns 11 on 9/11, September 11th. So, it's hopefully a great read. I look forward to reading it with my son, who will be going into eighth grade as well. And then, obviously, at the high school level, really, it gets more cumbersome at the high school level for math and for ELA because each class, each subject, has a requirement. So I certainly won't bore you with all those. You can see those in there. Mr. Hayhurst, the department head for ELA at the high school, did make some changes. Some new titles were added, or I shouldn't say added, but swapped out for other titles. So you'll see those in there. I can assure you, and this is something that we really, Mr. Swenson and I really asked all the teachers to do, is please make sure that they vet all of these titles, that they've read these books prior to actually suggesting them. We didn't want any necessarily surprise phone calls over the summer about content. So, I was assured that that has taken place and the teachers are really excited about the selections that they've chosen, which would be great. So you have those in front of you and I would ask for your approval.
Should we vote on this? Did you have any comments?
No, just again, Mr. Powers does a wonderful job working with our lead teachers to come up with this idea. And obviously, the idea is not to ruin anyone's summer. This is about kind of prevent that summer slide a little bit. And to, as I say to my own children at home, you know, I want you outside exercising and working your muscles, but your main muscle is your brain and you need to kind of not, you know, put that aside in the summer. You need to really kind of keep on that learning process. So, with that being said, they've done a wonderful job. I do appreciate the fact that our teachers did, as Mr. Powers said, vet the literacy selections. We did have a slight situation last year. We had some feedback from the community and we wanted to make sure that this year, everything was age-appropriate and they've done a wonderful job in the selections that they have made. So thank you, Mr. Powers, and to all of our lead teachers and all of our teachers across the district who had a hand in these summer packets.
So, do I have a motion to approve the summer reading and math packets? Motion by Mrs. Holbrook, second by Mr. Gelfey. Any discussion? Any questions? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So voted. Thank you. And Mr. Powers will have you stay there for our curriculum overview.
Absolutely. Thank you. And just to add one thing to summer reading and math, obviously, it's for our grades five through 12 students, but please note that the, you know, the lower grades do have optional summer work. You know, they don't necessarily give them titles, but they give them suggestions of books, different math work that they can do, but because it is optional and not necessarily mandatory. And some of the schools, you know, participate in different reading incentive programs. So, you know, it's not just happening five through 12, it's happening across the grade levels, but obviously, we don't necessarily make it mandatory at the younger grades. So I just wanted to add that as well. But for this evening's curriculum update, two pieces of information that I'd like to share with you to start. The La Liberty Elementary School, the Merrill Elementary School, and the George Mitchell Elementary School were awarded a grant through ST Math. As you know, we use GG and ST Math on a daily basis for our elementary students. And ST Math actually put out a grant opportunity for schools that were currently participating in ST Math and districts that wanted to come on board. And the main difference now is they're going to provide extra professional development, where they really, on an ongoing basis, haven't necessarily provided professional development. It was something, I think, when Mr. Swenson brought that in, there was initial PD offered. But this is really going to be onsite training by ST Math. And then they're also going to identify an ST Math champion. It'll be one staff member at every school that will really lead the charge further in terms of professional development and really become a certified ST Math trainer, if you will say. So, you know, the opportunities exist out there for us to certainly expand this, which we're pretty excited about and really, just the amount of time that they're committing to those three schools and to the district is just, you know, is fabulous. And Mr. Swenson and I, you know, have a close relationship with our ST Math partners and we were just very excited to hear that we were going to be able to participate in this grant, so it'll be a good opportunity for us and for our students and really for our teachers, you know, who are using this program extensively, but now they'll have additional professional development on this program, which will certainly make a difference. So, very, very pleased to share that with you. The other thing I'm proud to announce is that the Bridgewater Rainham Regional High School applied for a grant through the Plymouth County Task Force, Youth Prevention Task Force, and District Attorney Cruz and Sheriff McDonald offered a grant to area districts to help drug-endangered children, not necessarily children that are under the influence themselves or using or abusing drugs. Certainly, that may be the case, but children that may be victim or have family members that might be involved in drug activity. And so really, the focus of this grant is to look at how, you know, those at-risk behaviors can possibly impact the brain and then potentially impact learning. So the training will be helping traumatized children learn. It'll be offered by Mass Advocates for Children, who partnered with the Harvard Law School. We were actually fortunate to have these trainers in our district last year and even this year at the Merrill School, and so they'll be coming out to work with the high school as well. So that's, again, a free professional development opportunity for us through the DA's office and obviously, they'll be getting with our teachers, and we did it with our administrators, and I'm going to propose that we actually conduct this activity with a school committee, possibly before our next meeting. I know Ms. McDougall was going to try to coordinate that. And we posed the question, what does a BR grad look like? Or what really, what do we want a BR grad to look like? And the reason why we're doing this activity is, you know, we're trying to identify what knowledge, what skills, and what pro-social skills, feelings, emotions that we want our students leaving the district with. And we really feel as though this is something that, from preschool all the way up to grade twelve, as administrators, as school committee members, as parents, that we have a responsibility to make sure that our students are graduating with those skills. And so we did a activity at some different meetings, where we've done an inventory surveying. They've created charts and diagrams, which has been great. Mr. Swenson and I were partners, so we also had not just the administrator lens, but lenses as parents as well in the district. And what we're going to do, I'm going to be working with Ms. Watson and the high school staff to actually talk about what do our BR grads look like now. And so what we're hoping to do is be able to identify, if they exist, gaps. You know, this is what we'd like our graduates to look like, this is what they currently look like, and so what do we need to do to close that gap? Not necessarily even in achievement. We were talking, I think every group came up with empathy. We'd like our students to be empathetic towards others and have those skills and understanding of others and be so much more inclusive. And I think our students do a great job of that, but how can we get them to even be better? And so, you know, we might currently look and say, and I don't think this is the case, but this is just an example, maybe our students aren't that empathetic now. Okay, so what do we need to do to close that gap? So we're just trying to get all the stakeholders involved. Again, you know, we've had some parents share their ideas on the various committees, administrators, teachers, and we'd love to get your input as well. So I know Ms. McDougall will try to coordinate that before the next meeting and maybe just have you come in a few minutes early, if possible, and kind of put you through that exercise. And the reason why we're doing this is obviously, one, to close that gap, but this also helps us when we're developing our strategic, you know, goals, our strategic plan, really, where do we want the district to go and why? Well, it's all about kids, and we know that, so we really want to make sure that we're looking at that as an end result. So if you'd be so agreeable, I'll have Ms. McDougall schedule that, if that's possible.
Very good. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Powers?
I think that survey's fantastic.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea.
Mr. Powers did a great job of bringing that question forward and sharing it with our lead teachers, referred to Admin Council, and as you said, as he said, we were partners in it, and we have the lens of educators, but as parents as well, so we know what we want our own children to have. But at the end of the day, we have the responsibility to make sure that, along with our families, that we are incorporating these things into our students on a daily basis. And it doesn't necessarily mean, as Mr. Powers just said, if we identify a gap, that we necessarily have to create maybe an entire course to address that, but how are things like with empathy, how can we then incorporate it into the everyday activities within our building, which then become ingrained within the climate and culture of our buildings? And it's great to see what the different viewpoints of our K, all the way up to twelve, views are of our students. And again, using this as a self-reflective exercise to make sure that we are producing the best grads out there, which I think we do a fabulous job of right now, but like everything else, everything's a work in progress, and we can always find room to improve. So I appreciate bringing that exercise in, Mr. Powers.
Thank you very much. Moving on to administrative and school committee reports, we have a budget subcommittee report from the new budget chair, Ms. Scoop Paris.
Okay. The budget subcommittee met on May sixteenth at 6:30. The committee is made up of myself, Mr. Dolan, Dr. Krymudowski, and Mr. Gelphy. Mr. Dolan was not present, and he had a prior commitment to this particular meeting. Each month, our Director of Facilities, Mr. Paul Fox, provides us with an update of district-wide repairs and maintenance, and you'll hear from him a little later. Ms. Macedo reported that the FY budget is in good shape. The substitute line of the budget has an overall improvement over the last year through April thirtieth of $65,000, which we are obviously pleased with. Mr. Fox and Ms. Macedo have been working on locking in a more cost-effective energy rate for the district's electricity, and Ms. Macedo will be bringing the information forward later this evening on a new business. And the budget subcommittee would like to recommend and present the following items for approval to the full committee. The district, under the advisement of the state Massachusetts in Mass. General Laws, Chapter Seventy-One, Section Sixteen, G and a Half, may deposit into its stabilization pension and other post-employment benefits account an amount not exceeding five percent of the prior year's fiscal year budget, so in this case, fiscal year eighteen's budget. The district strives to deposit $10,000 each year pending its sufficient funds to do so. The purpose is for future financial planning and to maintain the district's A1 bond rating. So in that being said, in the form of a motion, I recommend, on behalf of the budget subcommittee, a motion to allocate the transfer of $10,000 from the excess and deficiency fund to deposit into the stabilization fund pending sufficient fiscal year eighteen balances.
Motion by Ms. Scoop Paris, second by Mr. Gelphy. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So voted.
Okay. I also make a motion to approve the transfer of $10,000 from the excess and deficiency fund to deposit into the pension fund pending sufficient fiscal year eighteen balances.
Motion by Ms. Scoop Paris, second by Mr. Gelphy. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So voted.
Okay. And the third one would be a motion to allocate funds from the excess and deficiency fund to deposit $10,000 into the OPEB, which stands for the Other Post-Employee Benefits Fund, pending sufficient fiscal year eighteen balances.
And motion by Ms. Scoop Paris, second by Mr. Gelphy. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So voted.
Okay. And the third one would be a motion to allocate funds from the excess and deficiency fund to deposit $10,000 into the OPEB, which stands for the Other Post-Employee Benefits Fund, pending sufficient fiscal year eighteen balances.
And motion by Ms. Scoop Paris, second by Mrs. King. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So voted.
Okay. The Bridgewater-Ranham Regional School District is on a bi-weekly payroll system, and each year, the school committee must approve the schedule for payroll and warrants. So, and we have a schedule here. And I would like to make a motion to approve the fiscal year nineteen payroll and warrant schedules as presented.
Motion by Ms. Scoop Paris, second by Mrs. Holbrook. Any discussion on the payroll and warrant schedule? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So voted. And does that conclude your report?
Yeah, we talked about the fiscal year nineteen budget, but I'm going to let the treasurer speak to that. So we're good for now until the energy contract comes up.
Very good. Moving on to the Mitchell School Building Project update. Mr. Swenson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As previously reported, Bridgewater-Ranham Regional School District is currently in the feasibility study phase of the MSBA process in regards to the George H. Mitchell Elementary School. The district has recently hired Dataless Project Incorporated as our owner's project managers, with the next step in the process being the hiring of an architectural firm. They'll begin exploring options for a possible repair, renovation, or reconstruction of the George Mitchell Elementary School. On Tuesday, May eighth, the Bridgewater-Ranham Regional School District Director of Facilities, Paul Fox, Bridgewater Town Manager, Michael Dunn, and myself had a very productive meeting at the MSBA with the design board. We collectively selected three of the five architectural firms that applied for our request for services, which is also referred to as an RFS, for interviews. The designers that made the shortlist are Raymond Design Associates Incorporated, T2, or Trabowski Two Architectural Incorporated, and Studio G Architects. Yesterday, Tuesday, May twenty-second, the interviews were conducted at the MSBA offices. We are incredibly pleased and impressed with all the highly qualified candidates. After much deliberation and debate, a firm was decided upon, and that firm is Raymond Design Associates Incorporated, pending negotiations. We are still in the negotiation phase. So if all goes well with negotiation process, we'll be moving forward with RDA as our architectural firm. Just would like to take this opportunity to thank the Director of Facilities, Mr. Paul Fox, Town Manager of Bridgewater, Mr. Michael Dunn, and all the members of the MSBA selection panel who joined me yesterday and took time to participate in the interview process. I would also like to thank all the hard-working members of our school building committee, which includes Mr. Dolan and Mrs. Holbrook, who serve on that committee, for all their time and efforts getting us to this point. And very last, but not least, all of the residents of Bridgewater who voted to appropriate the funds for the feasibility phase study. And please know that all of the collective efforts are recognized and greatly appreciated. In the meantime, while the negotiation portion is going on, if anyone ever has any questions in regards to the MSBA process or any related questions, please feel free to contact me at dsswenson@bridge-rein.org or at 508-279-2140, extension 113.
Great. Do you feel that the negotiations would be finished by our next school committee meeting?
Oh, yes. My hope is, if all goes well, our OPM right now, the firm Dataless is now kind of working with RDA to put together a proposal. They'll submit that proposal to us. I sat down with Ms. Macedo today and Mr. Fox, and we kind of strategized on our end. We did submit as appendix A to all of the information we had to submit to MSBA, a four-line item budget, where that monies that was voted upon, up to $800,000. We had to kind of put, fill out each of the line items, one of the line items being the OPM, which we've already put online, which through what we put in there, what actually we negotiated, was about $20,000 less. So in conversations today, obviously, we want to be fair with the designer, but we also have a responsibility to the taxpayers of Bridgewater. So we want to make sure that, you know, we get a fair price and they're able to have enough monies and resources to get the job done effectively. But as my father always told me, great negotiation was when both people walk away unhappy. So I'm sure we're not going to get exactly what we want, they're not going to get what we want, but hopefully, we can meet in the middle and really start to move this process forward because we are starting to see some light at the end of that tunnel now. Once we get the designer on, it should start to move pretty quickly. And I know that a lot of folks out there, you know, will call and ask about the process, and why is it taking so long? It's taking so long because we're moving at the speed of government, and the bottom line is, if we want to receive funding from the state, we have to check all the boxes, and there's a process to it. But I would also say that it's a very thorough process, and obviously, there's a lot of criteria that needs to be met, and that's a good thing because we want to make sure whatever project we move forward with does not have the same end result of the one that's sitting on 500 South Street currently. So with that being said, that is the update, and if anyone has any questions from the committee, I'd be happy to ask of them.
Any questions from the committee? Thank you very much for your time. By the time you're done, you'll be a building expert.
Yes.
All right. The facilities department report, Mr. Fox could not be here tonight, so Mr. Swenson is going to fill in for him?
And Mr. Fox behaved this month. He didn't spend all that much money, so I just wanted to report out one project that we definitely needed to address, especially with the upcoming graduation at the high school. The district has entered an agreement with Access AV in the amount of $9,174 to restore the high school gymnasium sound to its optimal performance abilities. Access AV will be installing a new amplifier system that are designed to provide appropriate power to the speakers, which are currently underpowered. A control system will also be installed, which will set limits for the user and protect the system. Also introduced are a CD auxiliary connector, mixer, and high-performance wireless microphone, and all designed to provide high-quality experience. The district is expected to have this system up and running by graduation, and I just want to thank Mr. Fox, but also Jeff Fowler from BTV, who has really been a real asset to the district when it comes to our audiovisual needs, and he had some experience with this particular vendor and has had a great experience with them. So they did a full assessment, not only of the gymnasium, but we are going to have to address some issues in our auditorium and also at the football stadium as well. But I told Mr. Fox, let's prioritize, let's get the projects done that are of the greatest need, and right now, it would be the high school gym with the big event of graduation coming next weekend.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And moving on to the treasures report, Mr. Conley.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, members of the school committee, Superintendent Swenson. I just wanted to report back to the school committee the assessment letter that I delivered to Bridgewater and Ranham. As a result of the Bridgewater-Ranham Regional School District's committee meeting held on April fourth, two thousand and eighteen, the amounts due to the Bridgewater-Ranham Regional School District for the fiscal year two thousand and nineteen from the towns of Bridgewater and Ranham are as follows. Minimum contributions as required by the Commonwealth of Mass, Bridgewater was $20,755,678. Ranham was $13,318,750. Shared nondiscretionary charges and additional funding, transportation in Bridgewater pays 59.77%. Was $2,220,883. Ranham was $1,494,917. Ranham pays 40.23%.
Mr. Conley, can you just slow down just a hair?
Oh, sure. I'm sorry.
We're just trying to write the numbers as you're talking.
I'm sorry. My apologies. Start all over again, or no?
Just the Bridgewater number, the 20 million, if you could.
Twenty million, 755,678. Ranham, thirteen, three eighteen, seven fifty. Again, Bridgewater with the transportation at 59.77, $2,220,883. Ranham at 40.23%, is $1,494,917. Necessary operational funds, again, with the same percentages, Bridgewater would be Ranham, again, the same percentage, 40.23, is $3,101,263. And that's the total, which excludes debt. Bridgewater would be $27,584,426. Ranham, seventeen million, 914,930. The net debt for Bridgewater would be $2,7637.34. For Ranham would be $1,542,617.20. And the total certified amounts due for two thousand and nineteen, Bridgewater, $29,592,633.34. And that was hand-delivered to both Bridgewater and Ranham back on April sixth. I wanted to report back to the committee. I'd also like to thank the members of the budget subcommittee and all the people that helped to put this together, Kathy Macedo, Judy McDougall, Meg Keohane, Natasia Robisho, Carla Babalola, and any others that I might have missed because I don't want to do that. So.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Conley?
So I have actually a question. So you delivered those letters. Do we get a check July one from them? How does that be?
Their payment, we get a payment every month from both towns. It's split from both towns, for the debt and for the other amounts.
I had a question on a completely different topic. Are you, could finish with your report?
I have a couple of other things that are different from the report, if you don't mind.
No, not at all.
Okay. We had assumed or thought that we would earn about $45,000 in interest from the money that we have in the bank account. As of April, we have received $69,435, which is a very good increase, and we still have... As of April, we have received $69,435, which is a very good increase, and we still have May and June to go. We made a couple of switches with some of the accounts that we have, a little bit of interest has gone up, but we've done very well for that, and I think we've done, you know, excellent, trying to, trying to get that done. The second thing with just, and I've mentioned this before, with, with preschool billing and collection, everything went great this year. Everybody's paid, I don't, I'm not chasing anyone. I feel very good about that, and again, I, I have to thank the people that helped me, Tracy, Deana, Natasia, Carla, they all did a great job putting it all together and making sure that if they had to get a letter out or get a notice out, that it was all taken care of, and I think it'll be, it's going to be a little bit better next year. I don't know how much better it can get, but it's going to be definitely better next year. And the last thing that I have, and it was mentioned earlier, and I, I got this notice today announcing good news, the Senate adopted limits on charter, charter school expansion and also voted in favor of the amendment 242, which was mentioned earlier, which would increase regional transportation reimbursement to $68,878,679. I got that from, from the association that I, association that I belong to.
That's an increase from 73 percent to 80 percent. Thank you.
Is that the final?
That's the goal.
Pending.
Yeah.
I just had a quick question. I believe at the previous meeting, you had mentioned that you were still collecting the reports from the parent groups and the other groups in the school district, and I was just curious if you had received them all, the reports?
I think I have two more that I have to receive, and I've just talked to the committee, and they've all been very good about being in touch with me, and, you know, they, they've been great, and just making sure that they have everything that I need, and I've given them, I've told them exactly what I need, but they've been very, very good, yes.
At least the audits, you asked for the audits?
Yes.
Okay. Very good. Anyone, any other questions for Mr. Conley? Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Conley.
And next up, we have the annual health report and the SEBRT?
Esper.
Esper. Oh, I knew I was going to miss that review. By Mrs. Fahey.
Thank you, Dr. Prewendowski, Mr. Swenson, and members of the school committee. I'm just going to share with you a brief health services update and go over a little bit about the Esper program, which we initiated with grade nine this year, and we started with grade eight last year. If you were able to look at the annual report, the school nurses have been very busy this school year. Typically, there are over 6,000 visits to our health office each month, and I'm just going to share just a snippet of what goes on in a typical month. For instance, in the month of March of this year, there were 6,331 visits to the health office, there were 974 scheduled medications given, 350 PRN medications, 267 students were dismissed, and 6,064 returned to class, making our return-to-class rate 95.8, which is good. We did 5,168 daily procedures. That includes blood pressures, blood glucose monitoring, peak flows, pulse oximetry, things like that. And there were 36 classroom or staff presentations by the school nurses that month. So on average, what we've been seeing this year, the school nurses are seeing between 40 and 130 students per day in, in all of the health offices. I recently completed the status report for the Department of Public Health and children who have a special healthcare need, number 1,663 in our district. The breakdown of figures does not adequately reflect the underreported number of children with mental health illnesses. As I've mentioned at previous meetings, I have seen an escalation of children with anxiety and depression across grade levels in recent years, and I am very grateful to this administration for being so proactive on looking at social-emotional curriculums for our students to foster their coping skills and build some resiliency. Two programs that I'm proud of this year that continue are the SOS, Signs of Suicide Prevention Program, that we provide to all grade eight and grade 10 students. Nursing guidance and the school adjustment counselors at the high school collaborate on this screening program. The biggest gratification is knowing that we're helping a student or students that really were not on our radar as a result of doing the program and doing the screening inventory. It's really hard trying to break down the stigma attached with mental illness, but I think we are starting to make a dent in it, and children are feeling more comfortable coming and asking for help. The second program I wanted to talk to you about, and I gave you some extra information on it, is the Esper program. That stands for, the acronym stands for Screening and Brief Intervention and Referral for Treatment. We are mandated to provide Esper screening for one grade at the middle and one grade at the high school level. We chose grade eight and grade nine because they're two transitional-type years, and all the students can benefit by hearing some of the message a second time, even though it's only a year later. We have found that to be beneficial. This is a private, one-on-one conversation and screening done with each student and the school nurse. So we do each student individually. This is not a drug test. This is not a urine or blood test, and we modified and tweaked our brochure so that parents would understand that. They always get an opt-out if they don't want their child to participate, and this year, we only had a total of, we had 12 opt-outs in grade eight and only seven, I think, in grade nine, so for a total of 19. And we screened a total of 754 students individually, one-on-one. I gave you a sample of the questions that we asked during the Esper screening. It's called the CRAFT screening tool. And I'll allude to some of the responses that we got that were to make note of. We know that not all the students answer every question truthfully, and that's okay. This is still an opportunity to share information with the students and provide them with resources to take home. All of the students left are meeting with them with a folder like this to bring home, with a lot of different resource materials that we got from our Bridging Lives Coalition, we got from the CDC. And we tried to be as colorful and, you know, interactive with them as we could, so that this was a talking point while we had them with us, and I think it was appreciated, at least I hope it was, by them. Okay. So there were a total of 35 positive CAR responses, and you can see on the questionnaire, the CAR question was, have you ever ridden in a car driven by someone who was high or had been using alcohol or drugs? So the majority of students said no, and even if they said no, we discussed it a little bit further, what if in the future, if you were in a situation, how would you, would you have a Plan A and a Plan B? And so they come up with a lot of, a lot of good things that they would do if they were put in that situation. A lot of children had code words that they could text their parents or contact another parent. You know, some of them said, I'd just say, I'm going to get sick in your car if you make me get in your car because I don't feel well, you know, just something as simple as that, but they did a great job. Lose my spot here. 39 students required a brief intervention, and that's just asking further questions if they disclosed anything or had been thinking about any risky behaviors. We would delve into it a little bit more, do a readiness ruler with them to see if they're ready to make some changes, and then we'd follow up with those students. There were only 12 referrals to guidance, and there were no outside referrals necessary. Now, like I said, we don't know if all of the information was truthful, but it gives us an opportunity to meet with the students one-on-one, develop a relationship, and provide them with resource materials to take home, so that's, that's the positive. I will have more data for you in the fall. We participated in a research study with Dr. Nelson at Children's Hospital. All eighth-grade students did a pre-Espert online anonymous survey with parental permission that went home, and they will do a post-op online survey the first week in June. This data will be important to see if there was an increase in the students' knowledge of health implications associated with substance use, and they will provide the district with a full analysis of all of their questions too, and results. Lastly, I just wanted to update you on the Essential School Health Services Grant. Next year, the 2018-19 school year, is the final year of this grant. A new RFI will come out this fall, and I will apply for it on behalf of the district. As of June 2019, we will have received $1,187,522, so close to $2 million for health services since the grant's inception in 2001. And that's it. Does anyone have any questions about anything in the report?
No. You, sorry.
Rachel.
Oh, great, I'm sorry.
So if they answered positive to any of these questions, it says it's not shared or put on their record, but do parents get notified of that, or is it still?
As, we're programmed to be mandated reporters.
I also want them to know that it's going to be, like, I would want to know, but at the same time, I want her to know that she could go and talk to somebody.
Right. And that's the purpose of establishing someone they can go to with questions and talk to, and sometimes it is difficult. We do encourage them to talk to their parents, absolutely, but in certain situations, it's not usually a phone call unless it's something we're very concerned about.
So I, you had mentioned a grant, and Mr. Powers before mentioned two grants. I'm wondering if somewhere exists a list of grants that the district gets. I think we hear from folks frequently, why are we not applying for these grants? And in reality, we are, and we get them, but we get so caught up in following what the grant needs us to do to maintain having it, that, right, that we don't necessarily publicize that we received a grant. So I, I think for, for a district our size and the amount of grants we get specifically for health services, that's a huge number. I, I think maybe educating a little bit more on what grants we have, what grants we get, and the amount.
Right. Because any, any grant monies that we bring in come through our district treasurer, so we'll have a list, we can get a list of those.
We also have one other grant that, we got the fluoride mouth rinse grant, but that's for all grades two and three to receive weekly fluoride mouth rinse.
Mr. Galv, do you have a question?
Yeah, you said, you said they take an online survey also?
This, just this year, this was a project with Dr. Nelson at Children's Hospital, and it was an anonymous for a pre-eighth-grade Esper. So before they started the Esper, it's going to kind of see, it's going to be a little bit of a gauge to see how effective we were with our one-on-one education kind of interview and see if the, the students really benefited from the Esper screening.
So it's not the same questions that you're asking in the?
No. It's a different survey, and it includes vaping and some other questions, so the data will be really interesting when we get it back to share.
Any other questions?
One question I had, so you said the average, going back to, to your original comments, an average school has 40 to 100 visits a day to the nurse?
To 140, yeah.
Does, does that include, like, the students that have to come down on a regular basis for meds? Or is that, is that, is that separate from that?
That would include whoever came down for their medication.
Okay, so, because there are students that come down on a daily basis.
On a routine, yeah, but not, not a lot for medication anymore because of the time-release medications, but the students with diabetes, obviously, they're coming to the health office at least three to four times a day.
Okay. And then my last question would be, and it may be too early in this school year, we may have to wait till the school year closes out. Any idea in terms of, I remember the data that I shared with the committee for the preliminary budget, when we were advocating for this, for the school adjustment counselors, that last year, we had close to 6,000 reports to the nurses for social-emotional. Do we know what that number is right now?
Currently, I think what most of my nurses have told us, and we talked about this this morning at Health Advisory Council, that over two-thirds of our visits in the health office are for psychosocial issues or emotional support. Now, with the little ones, they may just need a walk and a little reassurance and, you know, different things at different levels, but more than two-thirds of the visits that we get are for support in, in the way of emotional or psychosocial.
Thank you. That's important to know.
Yeah, it really is.
So maybe we could do a report out, maybe once the end of the year, and you have all your data, that might be something that we share with the committee.
Sure.
Can I ask, I'm sorry, how, how do you determine whether it's psychosocial or just a bellyache?
Very difficult.
Because some kids come down with a bellyache, but you don't know what's causing them.
Right. And sometimes it's very difficult to tell. A quick story, I'll, I'll just be real brief, but years ago, when I first started, I had a third grader come in, doubled over, and she was, "My belly, my belly," she was screaming, crying, and I'm like, oh, she might have a heart appendix, you know? I laid her down to do a complete abdominal assessment, take her vital signs, the whole bit, and everything was kind of checking out and not really adding up, and I said, "Are you, are you worried about anything?" "No, my belly, my belly." She kept screaming, and I'm, so I called one of the other nurses over, I said, "We're going to have to, you know, get in touch with her mom," and finally, I said, "Are you sure nothing's bothering you?" "Long division." So I called her teacher, I said, "Will you please come down here and tell her she doesn't have to know long division today?" She was a little third grader. So it's, but trying to decipher whether it is something bothering them, it does take a little bit of time. And when we log them in, we initially might log them in our, our health software as abdominal pain when they come in, and then we have to add another footnote, a diagnosis after when we find out that it is a truly.
But I'm assuming, ah, repeat, repeat visits.
Right. And then we have our high-frequency flyers, and we love them, but some of them are challenging, yeah, and, but a lot of them do just need that little bit of emotional support. But I will try and tease out some of those numbers for you.
Sure, that'd be great. So if I could ask, from the 40 to 140 you see a day, you had mentioned you see students with diabetes three or four times a day. Are they counted three or four times when they appear, or is that just considered a?
So in that range, that's, that's the daily visits per building, so the, the buildings that have diabetic children, they'd be on the higher end of that.
Higher end of that. Okay. Got it.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mrs. Fahey.
Thank you, Marie.
You and your nurses do a wonderful job.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
The role of a school nurse has changed dramatically. Alrighty, moving on, we have a personnel update, and Mrs. Gormly couldn't be here tonight.
She could not be here today, so we have Ms. Macedo.
We have Ms. Macedo. Thank you.
And good evening, Madam Chair, Superintendent Swenson, and members of the school committee. I have for you an update on the personnel status, and the superintendent has approved the following new appointments and reassignments. Paul Jovolos Jr., Director of Student Services, effective July 1, 2018.
Yes, we'd love to have him come to the podium and say a few words.
I gave him a heads up.
Taking a hint wasn't one of my strengths that got me in this position, sorry. Good evening again.
You're getting married soon, you better learn to catch up on a hint.
And I got an offer accepted on a new house today, so a lot, a lot going on too.
Congratulations.
Good evening again, Madam Chair, members of the school committee, Superintendent Swenson. Very honored in the trust that the interview team and Superintendent Swenson have in me, but it'd be remiss if I didn't mention that I'm filling some very big little shoes as I, as I enter this, this new position. Ms. Thomas has been, you know, a real mentor over the past two years that I've been here in district, and I think that part of my ability to, you know, to perform and to, and to do the best that I can is going to come as a result of the great foundation that she's set. I, I've been in quite a few districts over my career, and I think that the programs that she's helped to build across the district have been, you know, some of the most robust, you know, that I've, that I've ever experienced, and, you know, having issues in the district, hopefully partnering with Mr. Powers to forward, you know, the, the very time-sensitive and, and necessary social-emotional learning across the district, and really working even outside of the Special Ed Department to, you know, to help to build some bridges and build some supports for our students. So, you know, I'm very humbly accepting, and I'm very, you know, proud to have this position, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I just wanna say about Paul, I mean, the job that he's done in, in his current role has been outstanding through, through his time here. He's really earned the trust of not only the administrative team, but also the teachers district-wide. And I think people can say superintendent, assistant superintendent are the most difficult jobs in, in a school district, director of student services. You're dealing with a lot of different situations, a lot of different needs, and I know with the soft skills that you have and the way, the knowledge that you have, and in terms of your ideas about compliance and, and district programming and everything else that you bring to the table, I think you are gonna be outstanding, and we're very fortunate to have you.
Thanks.
So welcome back in a new role. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Megan Glass, Ed Support Professional, effective May 10, 2018. Resignations. Kevin Marthas, Assistant Principal, Mitchell Elementary School, effective June 30, 2018. Allison Mizetti, Assistant Principal, Williams Intermediate School, effective June 30, 2018. The superintendent has accepted the following resignation for the purpose of retirement. Paula Moriarty, Special Education Teacher, effective August 6, 2018. Marcia Vespa, Secretary at Merrill Elementary School, effective June 30, 2018, after 24 years of service. Maria Souza, Custodian at the Merrill Elementary School, effective June 30, 2018, after 30 years of service. And this concludes my report.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Macedo.
Don't go too far. We have no unfinished business, and we'll start our new business with the energy contract, Ms. Macedo.
Thank you very much, and good evening again. Usually I'm here to speak to you about gas prices. However, this evening, I'm here to speak with you about our energy costs. In the past few years, we've worked directly with a representative from Direct Energy regarding our pricing per kilowatt hour, only for the Bridgewater side of the district. In the Rainham side, we use TMLP, the Tottenham Municipal Light Plant, and so, you know, that is already locked up, but with the Bridgewater side, we have to go out and get pricing. So our contract for Bridgewater is due to expire this November, November 1, 2018, and Mr. Fox and I have been looking at the pricing available with the Massachusetts State Contract, also known as COMBIs. I know you hear us talk about that a lot. We're looking at their energy contract, as well as we've checked out a few other companies then and found that the pricing with these other places have been a lot lower than our current rate, which is 9.638 cents per kilowatt hour. Now, I've given all of you a sheet so that you can kinda follow these numbers, so you don't have to be going crazy, like, "What did she just say?" So I'll help you go through that, but I'm not gonna read them all, but I just wanted you to have them available. So we anticipate the trend under COMBIs will move, will be more favorable for the school district over the long term. Just the size of the group alone has its benefits in the bidding market, and bidding our requirements will also help to foster competition, which will bring about better pricing for the district. The COMBIs contract will end on September 30, 2019, so there's a window of time between when our contract ends and when their contract ends, which is about approximately 10 months. And what we're looking to do is to get a price for that 10-month period from COMBIs, which will not be at the current rate that they have. Because we weren't involved in that initial COMBIs bid, we're not gonna be able to receive the 8.468 cents per kilowatt hour. We would receive a special adjusted pricing, which would probably be somewhat higher than what they're currently using for the 10-month period. This adjusted rate will be determined by COMBIs through the vendor. While the short-term pricing will not be at the COMBIs current rate, we anticipate that we'll receive an adjusted price that will be similar to the new pricing we just received from our representative at Direct Energy. And that was around 10, 10.814 cents per kilowatt hour, just for a 10-month period. And as you can see down below, it, the rate for Direct Energy went down as we increased the number of months that we'd have to lock into a contract. The lowest being a 48-month contract, four years, at 9.478 cents per kilowatt hour, which is just a little bit under what we're currently paying right now. And it's a long time to lock, you know, to lock that rate in for. We are looking for pricing for the period again of November 8 through September 30, 2019, when their COMBIs contract will end. And we wanna do that because we want to be able to get in with them so that when they're ready to either renew that, because they do have a renewal year set aside in their bid, or if they decide to go out to bid after the Septem, before the September 30 comes up, we wanna be a part of that bid, so that we will be able to enjoy the rates that they currently, that they will be enjoying. Right now, we're gonna get some kind of a blended rate because we were kinda Johnny Late to the scene, but if we get in from the get-go, then we'll probably be able to experience some very good rates. I can't say that it's gonna be at 8.468 cents per kilowatt hours, but I don't foresee it jumping up, neither does Paul. We both don't foresee it jumping up so high that it would get to the rates that we've currently been given. And I think, you know, if we get ourselves set up with COMBIs over the long term, I think what we're gonna see is that we're gonna have some better rates, and we're gonna be able to be in a program where we're fostering more competition than the way we currently do it now. So while we can't be certain, we anticipate that joining them will provide the district with better pricing than by going it alone for the long term. So what I would recommend and like to get a recommendation from the school committee to go ahead with working with COMBIs and getting a price so that we can get in, into this program with them and move forward.
Mrs. Copares?
Okay, so that being said, I would like to offer a motion to authorize Ms. Macedo in her capacity as Director of Business Services to enter into procurement process with COMBIs for the ENE 43 electricity statewide contract.
Motion by Mrs. Copares, second by Mr. Gelphy. Any discussion? Mr. Swenson, any recommendations?
It would come with my recommendation.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Macedo.
We like to save money, that's good.
Always try it.
All right. Next, we have a vote to approve the 2018-2019 school committee meeting schedule, which is enclosed in your package. And all meetings are scheduled for the fourth Wednesday of the month, unless otherwise noted. And we do alternate between the Rainham Middle School and the Regional High School. And I'd just like a motion to approve the meeting schedule. Motion by Mrs. Holbrook, second by Mrs. Copares. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted, thank you. And we'd also like to vote to reschedule the June school committee meeting to June 13, just to be in a more timely fashion with the end of school. A motion?
Next month.
Correct, June, yeah. Motion to reschedule that June meeting. Motion by Mrs. Copares, second by Mrs. King. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted, thank you. And I, okay, motion, a vote to approve the last day of school. Motion to approve the last day of school for high school seniors as May 24, 2018, and the last day of school for grades pre-K through grade 11 on June 20, 2018. Motion by Mrs. King, second by Mr. Hammond. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted, thank you. And moving on to the approval of warrants. We're gonna do the payroll warrants dated April 26, 2018, and May 10, 2018. Motion to approve the warrants by Mrs. Copares, second by Mr. Gelphy. To abstentions?
No, you're just taking the vote with who's here.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Wouldn't even say that.
Nope, don't even say that.
Okay, perfect, all right, moving on. General ledger warrants dated April 26, 2018, and May 10, 2018. Motion by Mr. Hammond, second by Mrs. King. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And now we come to the acceptance of grants and gifts, and just like Mrs. Riley, who's in the audience, we love the gifts.
Hi, Mrs. Riley. Thank you, Madam Chair. We're, as always, I'll be asking for voter consensus after I read all of our gifts that have come in over the course of the last month. First is a donation of $50 from Jessica Davenport via Travelers Insurance, which will be donated to Rainham Middle School. We also have seven flat-screen monitors donated by Mr. Al Correa to, again, Rainham Middle School. We have transportation to BSU for our city labs, courtesy of Bridgewater State University, so they're gonna help us with those transportation costs. We also have a very generous gift from the La Liberty Parents Organization for the purchase of a Chromebook cart in the amount of $7,836.50. And finally, 10 Old Colony YMCA summer camp scholarships. This is something that Old Colony does every summer, and these scholarships will go to students of need. And that's all we have for gifts for this month.
Very good. Motion to approve the grants and gifts mentioned by Mr. Swenson, motion by Mrs. Holbrook, second by Mr. Gelphy. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted, thank you.
Thank you.
You're abstaining from just the La Liberty?
LPO.
The LPO vote, all right. Abstention by Mrs. King? All right. And now we come to the part of the agenda for public comment. Do we have anyone with a public comment? Going once, going twice, very good, all right. Now, we just have some dates to remember. Our Excel graduation is Thursday, June 1, at 7 o'clock at the high school.
May 31.
May 31.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thursday, May 31, at 7 o'clock. That's a Thursday, yep. Our high school graduation will be Sunday, June 3, at 1 o'clock. June 19 will be the middle school graduation. The Rainham Middle School graduation will be at 5 o'clock, and the BMS will be at 6 o'clock. The Rainham Memorial Day Parade will take place on May 26 at 10 a.m., and the Bridgewater Memorial Day Parade will be held on May 28 at 10:30 a.m. And with that, we'll have a motion to adjourn.
Madam Chair, before adjournment, if I could. So as we all know, this budget season's been difficult for, for this group and, and the towns, but I wanna specifically give a shout-out to the parents of Bridgewater who, who've taken the time for the past few months to, to go to our council meetings, speak on our students' behalf, on our district's behalf, know that that is greatly appreciated by those of us at this table, the district as a whole. So I just wanted to mention those folks that step in.
Thank you to those folks.
Very good. All right. And after that, a motion to adjourn at 8:25. Motion by Mr. Gelphy, second by Mrs. Holbrook. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So voted, thank you very much.